Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Thursday, August 24, 2023. Can you do roll call, please? Mr. Banano.
Ms. Tsai.
Yes.
Mr. Grippo.
Here.
Dr. Hopkins. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris. Mr. Siobhan.
Here.
Ms. Singh. Dr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. LaCorte.
Here. And for the record, Artiman said that she would be out of the, not able to attend this evening. And Lori Maris just came in. Can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, Brian?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential to discuss a special education matter? Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Moved by Bill, seconded by.
Second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned for confidential. We'll be back. Good evening and welcome back to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. It is still Thursday, August 24, 2023. We had adjourned for a confidential session to discuss a special education matter. Minutes of the confidential session will be made available when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Lori, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dennis, would you read the mission statement, please?
Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion moved by Nishida, seconded by Walter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is now adopted. And now we are on to our presentation regarding our graduation proficiency assessment.
So first, let me just say, Dr. Logren is typically here to present this, but he had a family emergency, a family medical emergency, and actually left after arriving. So fortunately, he had prepared a screencast to put on the web. So we're going to run the screencast. It's only a few minutes long. The New Jersey GEPa is a relatively new test for New Jersey. So you'll see by some of the results that even at the state level, because usually there's usually some assessment lag, meaning it takes time to align the test to the standards. So I think we should probably run this. And then if there are any questions on the, you know, if the board has, I can certainly answer those to the best of my ability in the absence of Dr. Logren. And then anyone else during public comment, if you have any questions, certainly you can ask the question. And if I can't answer it, we'll get Dr. Logren to reach out to you. So why don't you go ahead, Ms. Clark?
My name is Dan Logren. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. I wanted to share with you the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment results from the 2023 administration. The NJGPA is a required assessment for all 11th grade students. It's designed to measure the extent to which our students are graduation-ready in English Language Arts and Mathematics. And the students need to pass both portions, the ELA and Mathematics portions, to meet graduation requirements. For students who do not meet the requirement in their junior year, they need to retake the assessment either in the summer or the fall. And then also, if they don't pass it after the retake, the students who don't pass it after the retake can look to use substitute competency tests or complete a portfolio appeal process. So looking at our English Language Arts scores, 78.9% of our students were shown to be graduation-ready compared to 80% at the state level, which means about 20% of our students need to retake the assessment in the fall if they haven't taken it already in the summer, and will need to demonstrate proficiency on the retake or an alternative assessment or the portfolio appeal process. Similarly, for math, close to 49% of our students were shown to be graduation-ready compared to 55% at the state level, which means approximately half of our current seniors will need to retake this assessment in the fall or pass an alternative assessment or demonstrate competency via a portfolio appeal process. So looking at our subgroup, demographic subgroup of students taking this assessment, for ELA in blue and math in gold, you see the breakdown for female proficiency rates and male proficiency rates. When you look at race or ethnicity, you can see how groups fared here as well. Also looking at economically disadvantaged IEP 504 English Language Learner groups, you can see the percentages there as well. So compared to our 2022 NJGPA, our students performed at a much higher rate in ELA, moving from 39.5% of students showing readiness to graduate to 78.9% in the 2023 assessment. In math, our students showed a slight improvement from the 2022 NJGPA, moving from 48.1 to 48.9, which obviously is still lower than we'd like, which means a lot of our students will need to retake the test to pass it or take an alternative assessment or use the portfolio appeal process. These results do confirm what our internal assessments have shown since the pandemic and inform our district-wide efforts in accelerated learning strategies that we continue to implement. In addition to the interventions we have planned for all students who require them, current seniors will also receive additional supports in the form of lab courses and tutoring beyond the school day. So our next steps, again, current seniors who may not currently be ready to demonstrate proficiency have been enrolled in instructional lab support courses to prepare for an additional fall NJGPA as well as the portfolio appeal process for graduation. In addition, these seniors will have access to tutoring opportunities along with other eligible students at Franklin High School for this academic year. The class of 2025 will take the NJGPA in the spring of 2024, and we will use our current performance assessment data to guide our intervention strategies for this year's juniors. For additional information, this presentation will be available on the district website, and you can click on these links to learn more. And if you'd like to get more information about mathematics or English Language Arts instruction in our district, you can click there. Or if you have additional questions, you're welcome to reach out to me via the email below. I wanted to also take this opportunity to present our access results. This is the assessment that students who are English learners take. It's administered annually to K-12 students identified as English Language learners. It monitors student progress in learning academic English. And then the scores are based 35% reading, 35% writing, 15% listening, and 15% speaking. And you see that there are six performance levels there from entering all the way up through reaching. So looking at our current, our most recent performance in the spring, you can see that our largest group are in the developing section, and we had many in the other groups as well. One interesting note is that it takes a score of 4.5 on the assessment to exit from the ESL program. Last year, we had 118 students who did exit. This year, we exited 133 students. So again, this is grades K through 6, showing the different groupings. Here's grades 6 through 12. So this year, we increased our number from 118 to 133. We will also continue to use best practices to support our students' efforts in attaining higher levels of proficiency in English reading, writing, listening, and speaking. If you wish to contact our supervisor of bilingual and ESL instruction or any other content area supervisor, please click on that link. And if you have any questions about this presentation or anything related to the presentation, please feel free to email me at the address below. Thank you for your time.
So thank you, Mrs. Clark. And that particular screencast is posted on the district's main page. Is that correct?
It's on the presentation page under the Board of Education.
So under the Board of Education tab, click Presentations, and you'll be able to find that to be able to get to Dr. Logren. Or if you have any questions about our ESL or bilingual program, Ms. Ochoa is the direct supervisor there, and she would be an excellent resource for you, as she does a wonderful job. President LaCorte, any questions from the board on that particular presentation?
I have none. Lori, do you have any questions? Sammy?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The jump seemed pretty significant, and it seems like, okay, we're coming out of COVID, so maybe we got a little better at some of it. But it seemed even more significant than that. Can you sort of elaborate on what we think contributed to it? It seemed like a 39% to a 78% jump.
Yeah, I think if you were to look at the state average, you probably would have saw a significant increase as well. And a lot of that has to do with alignment of the test to the assessment. And I, for whatever reason, that seems to be the standard across the assessments as we introduce them in New Jersey. It seems like English Language Arts comes along much quicker than does math. So I think we can attribute some of that to better alignment of the standards that we're asked to deliver to our students. And obviously, it was an area that we put a significant focus on, as we did with math. But we have put a significant focus on English Language Arts, especially reading, on the development of reading in recent years. So some of that likely is attributed to emphasis and focus. So now it's time to really focus on the math as well.
Yeah, that's a huge jump. So whatever we can learn from what we did there, I think, could be used maybe in other places. In terms of the folks that don't make it, especially in the math category, it seems like half, I guess, using this year, how many of those kids ended up being able to close that gap before they graduated? Like, what happened to that other half?
So the other half, so in the state of New Jersey, there's an opportunity to demonstrate the skills via a portfolio. So you can either do it through an assessment, which relieves you of the responsibility of having to do it through a portfolio, which is a much more labor-intensive work on behalf of the student and the teacher. And for those that aren't able to demonstrate meeting mastery via the New Jersey GEPa, and before that, it was the 10th grade ELA test and the algebra test, they would have to do it via, the students would have to work with their teachers and do it via a portfolio that then would be reviewed by the Department of Education officials. And that's across the state. So, you know, you've got 55% of the folks across the state not meeting, then that means 55% of the seniors who won't, who don't make it this year will have to demonstrate proficiency via a portfolio assessment, or they don't get to graduate.
And did we have, like, do we know what that is for our kids? I mean, how many of them met that threshold? How many?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but a majority of our kids do meet that threshold. Because when I say that, it's intense. It's intense, and it's very individual. So it's much smaller classes, and it is, again, a labor-intensive. And, you know, some kids aren't good test takers either. I mean, that's the bottom line. And they're able to demonstrate the proficiency, especially those that maybe have some language challenges, right? They're able to demonstrate the proficiency when they have the opportunity to actually demonstrate the work and not have to do it in 15 minutes on a test.
And who is it that they're demonstrating, this portfolio review?
They build the portfolio with our certified math teachers.
Okay.
And then those are submitted to the state, and the state reviews them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Nishida, do you have any questions? Bill? Mike?
No.
Walter?
No.
Dennis?
Just one question. What the, I believe we call it the lab, when the student itself does not meet the required number, is that during school hours, after hours, when do they get the additional help?
During school.
Okay. And does that affect, let's just say a student has a full load trying to graduate, how does that affect their day-to-day?
Typically affects an elective.
Say again?
Typically affects an elective.
Okay. Okay.
But not the lights.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. Thank you, John, and thank you, Dr. Logren. And again, if you have any questions, please reach out to Dr. Logren. And this is on the district website under the Board of Ed Presentations on the homepage.
And again, I apologize for Dan not being here, but he literally did have a family medical emergency. And you all, those that were here early, saw him actually leave to attend to that emergency. So hopefully all is well in the Logren family. And if you do have any questions, either reach out to myself or Dan. And of course, if you want to look at that presentation, again, it's on the website.
Now we're on to you.
Thank you. So I have three items, school readiness. Yesterday evening, we posted a letter speaking to the readiness and the, speaking to the readiness for the opening of the 2023-2024 school year, which begins on September 7 for students in grades K through 12. Again, school starts September 7 for students in grades kindergarten through 12. On September 11, which is the Monday after the 7th, our pre-K students arrive. So K through 12 start on September 7. Pre-K students are added to that mix on September 11. Once again, I want to thank Mr. McNamara, our Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, and the entire maintenance and custodial crew for their hard work this summer. As you know, we tear apart every building, we empty every classroom, and we do our due diligence in a, what we call floor-to-ceiling cleaning of every classroom. So they've done a wonderful job. They're just about there, putting finishing touches on outside of buildings, inside of buildings. And we should be ready, we will be ready, for the arrival of teachers on September 1, and then again, the arrival of students on September 7. So the facilities are coming along nicely, and we are excited for Convocation Day. Convocation Day is the first day that our staff arrive. And our staff arrive on Friday, September 1. So on Friday, September 1 is Convocation Day at our schools. Our staff will be returning from their summer break and getting ready for students on September 7. On the transportation front, I also made mention in that same letter posted yesterday of the board's interest in engaging a consulting group to further audit the district's transportation contractors. This evening, there is a recommendation on the agenda to hire a firm called the Pupil Transportation Safety Institute, PTSI for short. Once approved, PTSI will engage and work alongside the district's transportation staff to further audit current district contractors to help and help to prepare an even stronger bid specification than what we currently have to guide the process for rebidding current routes and all future routes as we move forward. New Jersey CUSAC. You'll hear from the Board President in just a moment that the Department of Education has completed the required monitoring of our school district. The New Jersey Department of Education monitors all school districts in New Jersey for compliance every three years. Last school year, it was our turn. What you'll hear in a few minutes from the board's president is that we did well in all areas. So I certainly won't steal your thunder, but I do want to take this opportunity to congratulate all those that are involved, not only in preparing for monitoring, but for ensuring that on a daily basis, we're complying and doing everything that we can do to provide the best possible experience to our students. And I want to thank the entire school community for that fact, for its continued support, because it takes us all, including our parents, including our friends, and our students, and teachers, and everybody. It takes the entire district in order to provide the very best experiences to our kids. So thanks to all. And that's it for us.
Thank you. Picking up on the CUSAC, which stands for New Jersey Single, New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum Performance Review, it's an obligation, as Dr. Ravalley said, that all districts are required to complete every three years. During our CUSAC review, or during any CUSAC review, school districts analyze their practice as it relates to five focus areas: fiscal management, personnel, operations, instruction and program, and governance. This information is recorded in a district performance review, which is then reviewed by a team of representatives from the Somerset County Department of Education. Earlier this month, we received our final CUSAC scores, and we did extremely well and passed in all areas. Our final scores were as follows. On instruction and programming, we got an 82%, finance 92%, governance 100%, operations 100%, and personnel 95%. Based on those high earned scores, the district's designation and placement on the New Jersey Department of Edu, New Jersey Department of Education Continuum is once again a high-performing district. Tonight, Dr. Ravalley said that we are acknowledging the placement on the continuum, and we would like to thank you and the district for the hard work that it goes into achieving that. And having sat for a portion of it, it's a lot to pull a lot of records randomly and at the will of the people evaluating. So thank you, and great job to our staff. For Sustainable Jersey School Certification, also earlier this month, we were notified that the district now has five schools which have received Bronze Certification through the Sustainable Jersey for Schools organization. These schools are Claremont Elementary, Elizabeth Ave, Franklin Park, McAfee Road, and Pye Grove Manor Schools. Additionally, Franklin High School now joins Hamilton Street Campus of Franklin Middle School as having achieved Silver Certification from the group. Sustainable Jersey for Schools is a free voluntary certification program for pre-kindergarten through 12th grade students in New Jersey. The program provides guidance, support, and recognition to schools that implement steps to be sustainable in their operations and proactive in preparing students for the challenges they will face in the future. Our schools will be recognized at a special ceremony this fall at the New Jersey School Boards Association Workshop. So congratulations to all. And I'm looking at Principal Hurd from Hamilton Street Campus. And our Family Engagement Survey, last week, our students, our student families received a message asking them to fill out the Family Engagement Survey online. For those of you who have not done so already, please do so and check the website under the district announcements and share your thoughts on ways the district can better support you and your child. The survey will be open until August 31, so you have one more week. Free and reduced meal applications while on the website, please check out information from our Food Services Department. The new free and reduced meal application has been posted, and we expect there will be online access to those applications shortly. There is also information on a new meal program called the New Jersey Expanded Income Equity Program, as well as information on the Breakfast in the Classroom program that will continue in our schools again this year. And Backpack Drive, finally, our annual backpack drive will be held this coming week. The families of the Franklin Township Public Schools will be invited to pick up backpacks and school supplies if needed. We would like to thank those who donated to this event and the event sponsors, the Legislative Office of Assemblyman Joe Danielson, the Franklin Township PBA, the Community Relations Bureau of the Franklin Township Police Department, ICNA Relief, the Community Baptist Church of Somerset, and the Franklin Township Education Association. So once again, thank you to our many donors and to these groups. And that ends the Board President's report. And now we are on to comments from the public on agenda items only. Can I get a motion to open that?
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by?
Second.
Nishida, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on agenda items is now open. Five minutes per speaker. Please state your name and address if you're over 18. Motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by?
So second.
Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment and agenda items is now closed. And now we are on to our committee and liaison reports. Mike, would you do curriculum, please?
Sure. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on August 14, virtually at 6:00 PM. Present were myself as chair, Mr. Jackson, President LaCorte, Dr. Logren, and Dr. Ravalley. We discussed some new business. We discussed the approval of the Franklin Township Public Schools 2023-2024 Emergency Plan for virtual or remote instruction. This plan provides the continuity of instruction in the event of a public health-related district closure. We also discussed to approve the district PD, Professional Development Mentoring and Onboarding Plans. These plans describe the district's intentions for professional development, staff mentoring, and staff onboarding based on input from multiple measures. We also discussed approving the 2023 Summer Minor Curriculum Changes in Rubicon Atlas. These changes included revisions to resources, learning activities, and assessments identified in the district's curriculum warehouse, Rubicon Atlas. We also discussed to approve the following curricula for data science, grades 10 through 12. It's a math elective course, which is a deep dive into statistics, probabilities, and data-informed decision-making. That's going to be a very exciting course. Benchmark Advanced Curriculum through grades K through 5. This award-winning Structural Literacy Program was recently adopted by the board in July. We talked about the advanced placement African-American Studies in grades 10 through 12. Franklin High School is one of the participating schools in the Advanced Placement African-American Studies pilot taking place during the 2023-2024 school year. We also discussed approving a drone curriculum for use in the RTS program, grades 7 through 12. This new course will provide exciting science, technology, engineering, and mathematics learning experience for students in that program. We also approved Suborani, a textbook for use in middle school Latin courses. This textbook was selected by the World Languages Department and provides rich opportunities for Latin scholarship at the middle school level. We also had some other discussion items. The committee reviewed the NJ, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which we talked about today, and the access for ELLs when the assessment outcomes. These assessments were presented here today in the public meeting. The committee also discussed formal notification and receipt of the NJCUSAC scores. For the third consecutive round of NJCUSAC monitoring, as President LaCorte just mentioned, we were designated a high-performing school district. The committee also reviewed some program updates to our world languages. We concluded that meeting at 7:20 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Nishida, would you read Communications, please?
Sure. Communications and Public Engagement Committee met on August 14 at 7:51, virtually. Present at the meeting were myself as committee chair, Dr. Hopkins, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. Ravalley, and Mrs. Clark. The committee was informed of some upcoming events, such as the Family Fun Day sponsored by Zoo Fall Health on Thursday, August 17, 2023. Franklin High School will hold its freshman Franklin High School will hold its freshman orientation on August 29th, while the campuses of Franklin Middle School will hold their new student orientation on August 23rd, 30th, and 31st. SGS will have a meet and greet with Principal Solomon on August 21st, and FPS families can meet Principal Stein on August 31st at a special event. Finally, the annual backpack giveaway is planned for the last week of August. As the district gears up for the return of students and staff, phone and email blast messages will be going out, as well as invitation to complete the annual family engagements survey. The township newsletters should be out in September with articles on the Curriculum and Instruction Department and the new school threat assessment teams, as well as some back-to-school thoughts from our school leaders. The committee was informed about the progress on the district mobile app, as well as review of the district website and mass notification platform. At its meeting this year, the Board of Education will recognize local organizations whose work benefit the staff and students of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter, will you read the Personnel Report, please?
The Personnel Committee met on August 21st via Zoom at exactly 6:02 PM we started. In attendance were Artemon Singas, Chair, myself, Lori Maris, Nancy La Court, Dr. John Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Snyder. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee reviewed and discussed the following items: Personnel Report, August 24th. Number two, the Personnel Committee reviewed the Personnel Report. Appointments include teaching, paraprofessional, and secretarial staff at Franklin Middle School at Hamilton Street Campus, Vice Principal. Additional appointments include stipends, including fine visual performing arts, extracurricular activities, fall athletics, alternative education teachers, ESL testing, and screening, and translators, to name a few. Job descriptions: Supervisor of Special Education K through 6 revised, Supervisor of Pupa Personnel Services PK through 12. Dr. Ravalley viewed the scope of the revised positions and new position. Good of the Order, Mr. Snyder reviewed the status of the employment of a teacher with J-1 visa arriving for new teaching orientation. Dr. Ravalley viewed the committee transportation study proposal that he talked about today. And we adjourned the meeting at 6:54 PM.
Thank you. Would you now move on to Facilities, Technology, and Transportation?
So Facilities Committee met on August 22nd at 6:01 PM. In attendance were myself, Ms. Lori Maris, Dr. John Ravalley, Mr. Brian Banano, and Mr. Louis Valencia. Transportation Consultants, committee members reviewed the scope of work, and the administration is recommending Public Transportation Safety Institute, PTSI, to begin working upon BOE approval. Board Member Project Updates, Mr. Banano provided an update on construction of the new Buildings and Grounds Facility and the Franklin Warriors Health Center. Both projects expected to be completed early this fall. Facility Use, the committee discussed the facility use applications appearing on the Board's August 24th agenda. Change Order Number Two, B&amp;G Office and Garage. The committee reviewed Change Order Number Two, which will be charged to the contract allowance, specifically additional steel lintnos as required by Caldwell openings, data IT, CCTV, wiring and infrastructure, and trenching from building number two, number three, I'm sorry, to building number four for data. Energy Report, Mr. Ryan Ellis provided a written report to the committee regarding the status of the Claremont Solar Report. Good of the Order, committee members toured the Franklin Warriors Health Clinic, which is something that we all need to be very excited about, and the meeting adjourned at 7:22 PM.
Thank you. Dennis, would you read the Policy Committee and then Strategic Planning, please?
Yes. First, the Policy Committee meeting. We met on August 14th, 2023. Present was myself, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Nishida Desany, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. John Ravalley, and Mary Clark. The committee reviewed Policy 2419 School Threat Assessment Teams, which had been previously reviewed at the committee meeting last month. Subsequently to the first review, the NJ DOE released guidance on the creation of these teams, and that guidance has now been incorporated into the policy, which will go before the Board for a second reading and adoption on August 24th, which is tonight, 2023. And accompanying regulation with more details on this policy was also reviewed and will also come before the Board for adoption tonight. The committee reviewed Policy 1642.01 Sick Leave, which is also a new policy. This is, this based on revisions to the law pertaining to the requirements for sick leave for school district employees. These revisions significantly expanded the scope of allowable uses of sick leave for school district employees, and also established provisions for a board to require certification, responsible documentations, and advanced notice for requests for sick leave. This new policy incorporates the revisions of the law. Since the law became effective on July 3rd, the Board will be a separate motion at their August meeting, suspended the second reading of this policy so that it will be effective when the new school year begins. The administrative regulation to this policy provides more detail and will be issued before the Board year begins. The report has been submitted. All right.
Thank you.
Let's do strategic planning. Hold on. All right, the Strategic Plan Committee met on August 22nd, 2023. Those who were present was myself, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Will Grippo, Sammy Chavon, Dr. John Ravalley, and Mary Clark. The begin, the meeting began at 7:25. Okay. Members of the committee had previously provided input on the goal areas and statements for the new strategic plan. Those goals, areas, and statements was developed and aligned with the district goals, and after review and consideration of the strategic plan survey responses. At, at the meeting, the committee reviewed a draft template which organized strategies under the goal areas of health and safety, curriculum and instructions, personnel, sustainable and green initiatives, and community engagement. The members made suggestions for additional goal statements and strategies which provide more specific actions to achieve the, the goals. This document will now be shared with the appropriate administrative staff to develop activities to be accomplished over the three years of the plan. The activities will act as a step within the strategies to achieve the goal statements. It is expected that the final plan, including those activities, will be presented to the committee and then to the full Board of Education for approval at their meeting in either September or October. The meeting adjourned at 8:40, and this report has been submitted.
Thank you, Dennis. Lori, would you do Finance, please?
Yes. Finance Committee met on August 22nd. In attendance were myself, Lori Maris, Mr. Sammy Chavon, Dr. John Ravalley, Mr. Brian Banano, and Mr. Louis Valencia. The committee was updated on the Bill's List for the month of August. Committee was also updated on the Board Secretaries' Report, Transfer Report, Bank Reconciliation for the prior month. Our charter school payments were also shared. The district paid $1,681,315 in tuition for the month of August, and the meeting ended at 7:14 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Sammy, would you read the safety report for Bill, please?
Thanks, Sam.
Sure. So in attendance, so meeting was August 21st, 7:15. In attendance were Mr. Bill Grippo as Chair, Ms. Lori Maris, and myself, and Ms. Nancy La Court as ex officio, district staff were Mr. Orville Wilson and Dr. John Ravalley. The items we covered were, the committee discussed the district's response to the July 17th transportation incident at Claremont, and reviewed a consultant proposal presented by Dr. Ravalley to assess and evaluate all aspects of the transportation services provided through the district's transportation vendors. We have about 8,000 kids we transport. The proposal is on tonight's BOE agenda for consideration. Secondly, the committee also reviewed the district's procedures associated with behavioral threat assessment and management. May recall that Governor Murphy signed legislation that mandates that all school districts must have behavioral threat assessments in place for the 23-24 school year. The purpose of these teams is to reduce acts of violence and create safe schools for identifying and managing students who may pose a threat of targeted violence. The second reading of the behavioral threat assessment policy is on the Board of Education agenda for tonight, along with the first reading of the regulation that is associated with it. The committee also reviewed the Student Safety Data Systems, SSDS, for all the 22-23 school year that was submitted to the Department of Education in July. The SSDS is the district's record of incidents of student suspensions and the results of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents investigated during the school year. Mr. Wilson will prepare the full SSDS report for presentation to the BOE and the public in our October meeting. The committee discussed changes to the district's safety plan related to the student-parent reunification process, that's the process after there's an incident in the schools, how the parents are reunited with their students. And finally, the committee reviewed the preparations in place for opening the school. Meeting was adjourned at 8:15 PM.
Thank you. Do we have any liaison reports? Sammy? Lori? Nishida? Bill?
So Somerset County Ed Services Commission met. They're selling a bunch of their buses. It's going to be interesting. And Hunterdon County meets this week for the summer. So I'm on both of the committees, Hunterdon County and Somerset County. Somerset County meets every other month. Hunterdon County meets every month. So I'll give you updates as we go along.
Anything? Dennis, any? Okay, now we're on to the new business portion.
New Business. I would like to make a motion to move R1, the monthly reports, M1, the minutes of the Board meeting, A1, travel and related expense reimbursement, A2, to affirm harassment, intimidation, and bullying decisions, A3, the maximum allowable cost of independent education evaluations for the 2023-2024 school year, A4, NJ CUSAC placement, A5, the PTSI scope of work and contract, A6, a new policy's second reading and adoption, A7, new regulation adoption, A8, suspension of bylaw and new policy first reading and adoption, A9, facilities use, A10, special education settlement, A11, a settlement agreement, A12, a memorandum of understanding. B1, warrants and payrolls, B2, the financial reports, B3, contract approvals, that's quite a few there. B4, change orders, B5, state aid, B6, fiscal year 2023-2024 payment of claims, C1, out-of-district students for the 2023-2024 school year, C2, field trip destinations, C3, field trip applications, although there are none at this time for both C2 and C3, C4, Chapter 27, Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Plan for 2023-2024, C5, to memorialize minor curriculum changes, C6, to approve a new course, C7, to approve new curricula, C8, to approve a new textbook, C9, District Professional Development Plan for 2023 and 2024, C10, the District Mentoring Plan for 2023-2024, C11, the District Evaluation Onboarding Plan for 2023 and 2024. I'd like to move P1, to create a position, P2, a new job description, P3, revised job description, and P4, the Personnel Report dated O2, number two dated August 24th of 23. So again, that's to move R1, M1, A1 through A12, B1 through B6, C1 through C11, and P1 through P4.
Thank you. Moved by Mike, seconded by?
Second.
Nishida? Any comments, discussion, questions? Lori? Sammy? Nishida? Bill? Walter? Dennis? Mike? Roll call, please.
Mr. Desany? Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Chavon?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. La Court?
Yes.
Everything passes.
Thank you. And now I would like to welcome our new Hamilton Street Campus Franklin Middle School Vice Principal, Tamara Hollinger, who is returning to us as previously an academic intervention support from before. So welcome.
Oh my goodness. Wow. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone on the Board, to Dr. Ravalley and all the administrators that are here, to all the parents and community members. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be before you today. I also, most importantly, like to thank God and to my family that's here with me, who have supported me unwaveringly through this whole entire process. I've often been told that sometimes the longest journey takes you exactly where you're supposed to be, and I'm happy to be back in Franklin Township Public Schools. I enjoy the fact that I really am joining a group of dedicated and amazing administrators, teachers, and students. I believe that education is a calling, inspired by a vision that requires resilience, dedication, teamwork, shared values, and shared goals, intentionally focused towards academic excellence for all students. Therefore, I stand before you today, honored and ready to do the work as a proud administrator of Franklin Township Public Schools at the Hamilton Street Campus. I look forward to being a part of all the great work that's occurring in this district, and once again, thank you so much for having me and your time.
Thank you, and welcome back. I feel like welcome back coddle is appropriate, but that just aged me. Okay, now we're on to public comment on any topic. Can I get a motion to open public comment, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mike, seconded by? Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, public comment on any topic is now open. Please state your name and address for the Please state your name and address for the record.
My address is 56 Victoria Drive, Somerset. Well, first, I would just like to ask our community to continue to keep the parents, family, and loved ones of Fajah Atiya Williams in our thoughts and prayers. Fajah's mother, Najma Nash, could not be here today, but she did ask that we remind the community about the petition that she has developed for Fajah's law, which seeks to implement comprehensive safety measures for all students in New Jersey, and particularly those with special needs traveling on school buses. The petition can be found on the website, change.org. During our last meeting, I shared a number of concerns in parents who are part of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for the district. And as Dr. Ravalley shared in his recent letter to our school committee, several of our parents did meet with him and Dr. Sofield, as well as several school administrators, about those concerns. The meeting was productive, and we appreciate that our school administrators took the time to hear our concerns and provide insight into their next steps. I just wanted to briefly highlight some of what we discussed. So, one was communication. We talked about ways to improve communication with parents of children with special needs, possibly through channels like Seesaw and Genesis and even email. Those concerns included parents knowing which school their child would attend and who their case managers were well ahead of the school year. And we were especially pleased to receive letters of introduction in the mail this week, or last week, from our children's case managers, introducing themselves and even informing parents about CPAC. We've also seen that the information continues to be added to the Special Education Services section of the Franklin School website, and our expectation would be more of the same. We want to see more proactive communication to continue throughout the school year, from case managers, from teachers, from therapists, and staff. We know that everyone needs to regularly communicate with parents about their children's development and progress. The second topic, which is, came up, of course, tonight, was transportation. We discussed the opportunity to have the district's transportation leader join a CPAC meeting, so we can better understand bus accommodations and safety measures. In addition, we also reinforced the importance of detailing bus needs and accommodations during each student's Individualized Education Program meeting, also known as IEP meeting, as well as providing bus drivers with photos and information about the students they are servicing, so they ensure the right students are going to the right place safely. Three, we talked about the start of the school year, how we can help to make a smoother start for the year by distribution of color-coded ID badges to elementary students, so the staff can easily identify students and ensure they arrive at school and transition to the right teacher and the right classroom. We're looking to see opportunities for a more detailed overview of the special education program that's shared with parents, and that could potentially include building tours, welcome packets, all so that parents are well informed at the start of the school year. Another topic I wanted to mention is IEP progress reports. In our discussion, it was acknowledged by the school team that there have been many inconsistencies with the posting of timely IEP progress reports, especially at the middle school and high school levels. This is just not acceptable. And we could see even from the results that we saw earlier tonight, how this really could even have an impact when our IEP students are being tested and seeing where they are with their knowledge. How can we move forward if we don't know where we are, where our children are? Parents must be informed on how our children are doing with their goals, so that we can continue to demand that the school staff complete those reports by the deadline and that the school district hold those staff members accountable for making this happen. So, this is just a few of the topics we covered. There is much more, and the information was captured minutes from the meeting, and we're happy to share those specifics with those who are interested. As you know, the CPAC information can be accessed on the district website under Special Education Services. I did have a few specific questions. During the meeting with principals that was held earlier this month, was there a discussion about how each school can help special needs families transition to the new school year? Specifically, we had talked about incorporating special needs information and orientation materials, and ensuring principals and their teams are aware of CPAC and are sharing those resources. Of course, learning a little bit more about what's happening on the transportation side, a few questions there. Will there be an opportunity for parent input in terms of the information that is being gathered with the study that's being done by the Pupil Transportation Safety Institute? Will the scope of that work be shared with the community and with parents? Will the findings and recommendations of the Pupil Transportation Safety Institute be shared with the community and posted on the district website? Couple other questions. When will parents be informed for this upcoming school year who their teachers will be? What day? And when will bus passes information be available, whether in Genesis or potentially mailed? And one last question. Backpack drive. What day is that happening? I heard it mentioned a couple times. I got a little mixed up. I'll let you answer in a bit. So, lastly, we would just want to share some advice with all the parents and all the members of our community. See something, say something, do something. Many times, we see things that may not feel right, and yet we go about our day, we leave it to someone else to solve. But our children's health, safety, and education must always be a priority for all of us. As an example, this summer, several CPAC parents noticed that there were not any school zone warning signs near Claremont Elementary School, and in fact, the signage across from the school was labeled 40 miles per hour. As we all know, drivers should only go up to 25 miles per hour when students are present in school. We reached out to get this address, and I'm pleased to say that the mayor and township manager put us in contact with the Transportation Safety Bureau, who have promised to work with the county to fix the signage at the school. Again, see something, say something, do something. If we all step up and do what we can, we can make progress that much faster. We all should do what we can to contribute to this community, and as I said in our last meeting, the measures that support children with disabilities help all children grow and help our communities be stronger and accessible to all abilities. Thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work with the board and administrators to ensure our students achieve their full potential.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any topics?
Seeing no one else, Madam President, I move to close the public session.
Motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by?
So, second.
Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Dr. Ravalley.
Mrs. Clark, backpack drive exact date.
Okay, did I? Did somebody? Wednesday, August 30th?
Oh. There you go. Ops 30th from 11 to 2. Going backwards, August 31st is when Genesis opens. All that information you're looking for is posted in the portal. We no longer mail things because it's accessible instantaneously, but they are still working to get the portal ready for opening. But August 31st is the date that I have been told we are going to be ready to open that to the world. So, you should be able to get your homeroom assignments, your schedules, your bus passes, and all of those things, which will put you a week ahead of time. Yes, the answer is to the findings of the report. Actually, part of the scope of the work is for PTSI to come to a board meeting and to present the findings, but that won't be until the latter half of the fall, obviously, because there's several months of work that has to be accomplished. With regard to the scope, it is connected to tonight's agenda with regard to the motion, which was A, I forget, A11? No. No, it wasn't A11. It was earlier on. But it was the scope?
A5.
Five, A5. The scope of the work to be accomplished was, is part of the motion, but I can share with you in summary that the scope includes a priority auditing of all vendors, immediately going beyond what was accomplished at date. In addition, the group is charged with the task of making recommendations to further improve our bid specifications beyond what we now have and beyond what the DOE even requires. And of course, these are the folks that do that kind of thing, because they are the experts in the area. We plan to utilize, the hope is that we'll be ready to utilize those so that we can go out to bid for all of our contracts as we go forward. And honestly, our largest contractors are to and from. Our individual routes are a little bit less, and they go on a rolling basis, but our largest contract is to and from, and the board is positioning itself to get out to bid for that contract in the winter. But that won't, the timing of that all would put you in time for the September 24 year, but that's the, you know, part of the study as well, is make recommendations as to furthering the bid specifications with recommendations from these folks on training and safety and staffing and the kinds of things that even go beyond what the DOE might require, and then to put that out to bid so that that regulates us moving forward and is the requirement of the vendors moving forward. So, we're looking forward to engaging these folks, and we're looking forward to working with these folks. And then, we also anticipate, and I think I put it in my letter, we anticipate doing some auditing of our loading and unloading processes, both at our schools and even more importantly, at schools where we send our kids, where we have a little less control of loading and unloading, because it's their staff that are involved with our kids at that point. But as vendors of ours, we're able to do that, even school vendors, and I can't imagine that anyone wouldn't want to participate in that. So, we're going to be opening that up to some of our receiving schools as well to see what kinds of recommendations they might even have with traffic flow and areas to load and unload, and, you know, maybe we're doing things right in certain aspects, and maybe we can do things better, and that's what we're hoping to learn from all of this. And so, again, I think the board is excited to get this moving forward, and we see the urgency in it, and that's why tonight, with the approval, we'll reach out to these folks tomorrow, and we'll get this process moving. And now that it has been approved, actually, we'll get this process moving sooner rather than later. And I thank you folks for, I mean, I think that was a productive meeting as well, and I think if Dr. Sofield were here, she would echo that. We had a lot of great, rich conversation. We learned a lot of things from the experiences that you all have, and we were able to share with you some of the challenges that we have, because things don't always appear to be what they are on the surface. And, you know, sometimes it's a little more challenging in our world than what meets the eye. So, I think it was a great two-way conversation, and I think we all agreed that we took a lot away from it and that we need to continue these conversations. So, I know that you've got our commitment in doing that. I'll be involved in those as well. We are going to have our transportation folks involved in that. And then, anyone else, we think along the way, where you may benefit as parents from hearing from those folks, and they may benefit from hearing from you, which is the other side of that, right? We can bring them along as well. So, I thank you for taking the time. It was easier for us, because we're here. For you folks, you had to go out of your way to get here, and we appreciate that, because again, you can see, we've already got some immediate adjustments that have been made that hopefully will even better the experience for your children. So, I think I got it all. Oh, and yes, there was some discussion and focus. There'll be more discussion and focus on meeting the needs. Mr. Wilson meets with principals even more frequently than I do as the Director of School Management, so we're going to make sure to include that as a monthly item going forward so that any of the challenges our folks might be having in the schools can be brought to our attention and vice versa. We can bring things to their attention, because we do get a lot accomplished in those monthly meetings as well. That's it.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. And now we are on to good of the order. Bill, do you have anything for good of the order?
She's starting with me.
Bill?
Yes, ma'am. So, first, I want to congratulate Tamara. I was happily surprised walking in here tonight and seeing you get this position. We go back to Connolly Road School, that's, I don't want to tell anyone how many years that's been, but you were a phenomenal asset to that school when I was there. My first principal gig. I didn't want to be principal, but people like you made it great. It was really wonderful. You're a great PTO parent also. So, Tori, you're going to have a great, great resource with you. Tamara is sensitive, smart, and focused on the students. The other thing I want to say is the work that we did with the strategic plan has come out really positive. I mean, I think Sammy and Dennis did a great job as Chair. Dr. Ravalley has tremendous insights, and we, I think we moved something forward for the district, which I'm really proud of. Sammy, thank you for reading my report. I've got a little less voice this week, so thank you.
Do you have anything else? You're done, Bill? Nishida?
I'm good, thank you.
Sammy?
Yeah, just a few things. I'd like to also congratulate you, and I wish the best for you, and we're very excited to have you back and look forward to all your contributions, and I'm sure Tori will be a great leader over there, and you guys will work amazingly together. Yeah, the Medical Center, just wanted to mention how excited I am about that. We visited it. If anybody here is able to take it, or Tori, to your folks, highly, highly recommend this center to them. I mean, the thing that got me is the $0. So, you can walk into this center and not pay anything, and all of our teachers can have access to all the medical care that they might need at that center and their families. So, no copays, no nothing. And so, I think this is just going to make our whole teacher corps that much healthier and administrative corps that much healthier. So, I'm super excited about that. Also, excited about the Strategic Committee. I can't wait for the whole board to see it, but there's a lot in there. If we do everything that's in that strategic plan, we're already a great, we're going to be the best of the best. I mean, there's going to be an award for Franklin of, that's how good this strategic plan, if we sort of come through with it, and all the sort of subparts to it. So, super excited about that. Want to welcome back all of our students, so excited about this new year. And I didn't get a chance to say my condolences to Fezher's family. I did attend her funeral prayer, her jenaza at the mosque, and just want to extend my warmest regards to the parents and pray for their patients, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Lori?
I too want to congratulate our newest vice principal. Welcome. And I have to echo what Sammy said about the Health Center. It is beautiful. It is a very well laid out facility, and they are currently interviewing for some of the medical people that will be taking care of the patients that enter there, and I just think it's a fabulous resource for the township and most especially for the district. So, good job, guys.
Thank you. Dennis, do you have anything for good of the order?
Yes, I want to just echo my committee members on the strategic plan, planning. A lot of long hours, just like any other committees. We disagree, agree. We scrubbed some things, we added some things, but I think that the product that we are about to present is going to be a wow factor. Congratulations also. We are about to embark on the school year of 23-24. It's time for the class of 24 to step up. Is there? It's time for the class of '24 to step up. It's their time, time to shine. Let's hit the ground running, and let's do it.
Thank you. Walter?
Congratulations, Vice Principal Hollinger. It has a nice ring to it. I know you're enjoying hearing that. Congratulations on celebrating your 10-year anniversary, Franklin reporter and advocate. You have truly been an outstanding connection and connecting folks and everyone in our district, so we truly appreciate everything that you've done and continue to do for our district. I have a quote, this is just for all of Franklin, so if you're a teacher, a student, parent, administrator, anybody under the Franklin umbrella. Live your truth, express your love, share your enthusiasm, take action towards your dreams, walk your talk, dance and sing to your music, embrace your blessings, make this school year something to remember. Thanks.
That's very nice, Walter. Mike?
Welcome. The middle schoolers, you know, probably won't admit this, but they're counting on you. So good luck, and we're looking for great things from you. That's all. Thanks, everybody.
Happy anniversary to the Franklin reporter and advocate, and thank you for showing up all the time for us. We appreciate that. September 23rd is the Franklin Day, and it's at Colonial Park from 12 to 5. The Board of Ed will be there, as well as a ton of other organizations, so it's a great opportunity to get out and find out what makes Franklin great. And happy school year. Like have a great start to the school year, and we're very proud of like all the work that's been done over the summer to prepare for the school year. So we will see you at the beginning of school year. Yeah, see you in September. And thank you for sharing about the CPAC. That was actually extremely interesting to me. So thank you for sharing that, and we're looking forward to hearing more and more updates about that. And with that, yeah, see you in September, and we're adjourned.